I pledge allegiance to the government of 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
I have one. The Third Annual Bi-Local Spring Fling Marketplace will take place this Saturday, April 7th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Scranton Cultural Center. The event will feature approximately 75 vendors, including some of the area's finest local businesses, artisans, and wineries, and span four floors of the Scranton Cultural Center. A free reusable shopping bag will be given to the first 1,000 patrons, courtesy of FNCB Bank. There is a $2 admission fee. Food and beverages will be available for purchase.
One as well. Just a reminder that refuse and red container recycling will be one day behind this week due to the Easter holiday. DPW was off today, Monday.
Anyone else?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Lee Morgan.
Earth-shattering how many citizens are actually here tonight. The first thing I have is I'd like to ask the council members individually one question. Yes or no answer would be really sufficient. I'd like to start with Mr. Perry and ask, "Mr. Perry, would you donate your salary back to the city?"
Mr. Morgan, this is your time to speak. Please direct all your comments.
Okay, and I'd like to ask every council member, and I just think that it's important that since, you know, you felt it was vitally important to save the city $5,000, I think that if the council members themselves return their wage they're receiving back to the city, we can save another $60,000. And with, you know, with such a serious concern about the welfare of the residents of the city, I think that the council members would like to contribute something to the residents. But obviously, you must not like that question, but I can understand that. As you can see with the amount of people here coming to present any of their ideas to the city and to its council, or to ask the council to do anything, there's nobody here. And obviously, you must feel that you're above the people. And you probably are, to be quite honest, because they don't believe in this form of government anymore. But, you know, I think it's vitally important for the residents of Scranton to realize that maybe it's time to get rid of the Home Rule Charter and get rid of Scranton's designation and begin to start moving in a new way, because none of the city's financial problems have been solved. They've been shifted, but they haven't been solved. And, you know, when we come up with statements about the amount of taxes people pay, the rate of taxation is more than the wage base can sustain, which means the people in the city are seriously overtaxed. But as you can tell by the refusal of council to answer any questions, whether it's who made the motion to stop recording the meetings of citizens' comments and who seconded it, we couldn't get an answer from that because the council didn't feel it was necessary to tell the citizens who did it, okay? Who made the motion and who seconded it? But we have a councilman who says he wasn't even aware it took place. So we don't even know if this was even done in the building, to be honest. And you know what? Maybe now is not the time to worry about that question, because it comes down to the kind of people you elect. And when you talk about transparency in government, everything should be done in the public, not in back rooms, not hidden. And when you have a council and an elected government that talks about more property taxes, well, you know, you have to take a look at the Scranton School District and the city's performance, both of them. Terrible. Beyond terrible. And, you know, I think it's important also for the residents to consider that maybe, maybe it's time, in some future school board meetings, to ask them to dissolve the Scranton School District in a major way and close most of its brick-and-mortar schools and move these children to cyber school, except for special needs children, and allow the district to handle gym classes and art classes, even though a lot of that can be done online, and really shift the way government performs its services to the people, because the people can't afford this anymore. It's gotten to the point where we've elected people who won't answer to us. You know, the Scranton Times has a remarkable thing going on, because they're not even getting answers to their questions, which tells us that, you know, Thomas Jefferson spoke about what would happen to our government in the future, and everybody here is talking about guns over an extended period of time, because the shootings of children, which is very troubling. But Jefferson believed that the government, what's happening now, would happen to our government, and the government would not respond to us and not advocate things that make our life better, where they'd move for special interest, like Mr. Westler got, carried the ball for the North Scranton Project for rental rebates, and how this council carried the ball for Lack One College, and all the nonprofits, and passing out grant money all over the place, the taxpayers' money. And the neighborhoods are falling apart. And the schools, they aren't educating children, because when you take a look at where they are educationally, they're at the bottom.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Ron Elman?
Well, I'd like to resume my attack on council where I left off last week. As I remember, poor Wayne was trying to explain why 26,000 people didn't vote to have their taxes raised like the 13,000 losers. You seem to have a problem with their understanding what was written on the ballot. Mrs. Cummings and all these people, they sent a man to the moon and back, so they have to have some education to read what was on the ballot and understand it. Personally, I can't understand why 13,000 people would vote to raise their own house taxes the way things are around here, but maybe it's me. Maybe. Maybe if all you 13,000 got a guilty conscience, why don't you just donate $500 or $1,000 on your tax returns? Maybe it would save some poor widow this year, or maybe for a couple of years. I realize how enraged the mayor would get over spending some money on the city instead of downtown, but it's just a suggestion. If I may, this little munchkin that was up here last week, now, I am on her side, believe me. I don't see any reason for machine guns in the public. But this little girl right here, she has a fear of living. Did y'all read it? She said every day she's afraid of dying, she can't go to the movies, to school, or everything else. This is terrible for a child, and I can't understand how this little girl goes to school and a teacher doesn't want to get her some kind of counseling. Fifteen years old, this is the beginning of her social life, and all she thinks about is death and doom and dying and bus running over her, a piano dropping out of a building. This child needs some counseling. It doesn't take a brain surgeon to do that, to realize that. She got a whole life in front of her, and she's worried about dying. I spoke Saturday with one of my friends that I go play golf with once a year. He's got bladder cancer, and he said it's almost time for him to check out. But here, a 15-year-old like that, she needs to see Dr. Phil or somebody. Am I wrong in thinking this? I can't, how come you didn't read this article? What does these people at the newspaper write things for, and every time I bring a paper and ask you, nobody's read it?
That article was about our meeting. We were all here.
Well, there are some good things in this paper besides all these hate-filled leftist rhetoric in the opinions, the anti-Republican and anti-tru-- there's some good things. But like I said, I'm on this little girl's side. I'm not ridiculing her or making fun of her or anything. Almost my whole adult life, I've been giving $10 and $15 a month to St. Jude. Well, not by, after my father died in '68, he asked me to keep it up now and then. I have, I love children, little children. To see a child with this feeling of gloom, got a little cloud raining on her like those cartoon characters, it's terrible. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Hodewanitz?
Joan Hodewanitz, Scranton resident taxpayer. I give Kathy copies of my questions, but from the last three weeks, I'm still looking for some information on the status of the ORCA study and when the public will see any of the information that was gathered. I'm also still interested in what the city plans to do, if anything, about reassessment. I'm not saying they should or shouldn't. I'm saying I would like to know whether or not city administration has decided not to go forward or has some other plan. I would like to know what's going to happen. Also, we're in April, so that means one quarter of the year is gone, and hopefully the independent audit is well underway for 2017. And I'm curious, you mentioned this in caucus, and I have it down on my list, is Rainey and Rainey still engaged as a firm to help the BA's staff prepare for the audit?
Yes.
How many years are we going to engage them? This is the fifth year.
Every year, though, their role goes down a little bit less and less, so it's been successful so far.
I'll be waiting, I'll be awaiting that audit with great anticipation, since it should detail the significance of the five pending lawsuits. Mr. Rogan, I haven't heard in many, many moons any information about whether or not you can give us any kind of information or recommendations with regard to the Pennsylvania State Police report on the double pension investigation. Is that still on the shelf, or what's going on?
It's still being worked on. We're actually working on legislation, some legislation that's going to come out of our review of that report to help prevent that from happening again. So there will be legislation forthcoming.
Hopefully get some kind of feedback that that was a worthwhile effort.
And we are limited to what we could say regarding the report.
With regard to item, what is it, 5E, about the renovation for the Soretti Building, my understanding is that we have a lot of high-value vehicles there and other contents in that building that the city owns, correct?
Yes.
And now we're looking at future renovation of the building, but we haven't had title transferred from the Army yet? Is that correct?
That's, as far as I know, that's correct.
Okay. Is the Army insuring the building and its contents, and is it insuring them for a sufficient value? Because I'm thinking that we got some high-value items up there now. Does anybody know what the insurance policy is, and is it being modified as we move more property up there? Is it going to be modified with renovations?
We could check into that. My thought is that the contents would not be covered by--
Well, who's insuring them, then?
Well, that would be the city, but we could verify that for you.
Okay. I think we need to take a look at that, but if you're going to renovate the building, that's going to change the dollar value of that building, and the insurance should be adjusted accordingly. So if we don't own the building, somebody needs to be monitoring the Army that they're doing that, because having been in the Army, don't assume that. I can tell you that right now. And do you know what week this is? Mr. Perry, you should know. It's National Library Week all over the country. Congratulations for getting your library card. You are a good councilman.
Yeah, I got it in the mail. The building is beautiful, and I'm already turning my wife, she's going to be getting hers in the next couple of days, and we'll just keep it going.
But it is National Library Week. If people have not had an opportunity to visit the Albright Memorial Library, please go. If not, go to any library, go to the Library Express, get yourself a book at no cost to you, just have a library card, the issue one on the spot, and read a good book this week in celebration of National Library Week. And if you're a parent or a grandparent, take your children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
My name is Nadine Sims, city resident. I just became, not just became aware, but a situation that I perceive as being dangerous for the children, and that's over by the Boys and Girls Club. There should be, I would think there should be like a slow sign, children crossing sign there, the block before, and go in both directions. There's one sign right in front of the building, but by then it's too late. And if anybody's been over there when they're dropping kids off, parents dropping kids off in the morning and the afternoon, and it's really congested there, and a lot of people are not aware of that, and if you're coming down that street, you come right over the crest of the hill, and there's the children getting out of cars, mothers there, fathers there. And I think that hopefully we can get a sign put up there to, that building should have the same consideration as the school building. So if you can do something about that for the children.
Sure. Yeah, Ms. Reed, can we send something out to Director Gallagher and Scram, please, see if we can have some kind of speed deterrent put there, whether it's signage or even something, a striping, a marker on the pavement itself?
Something before they get to the block itself, the whole block before, so people be aware of that before they get to the building.
Yep, we'll get correspondence out tomorrow morning, first thing, and then we'll get back very soon from them after they go on site. See what we can do.
I'll be watching.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Dave Dobson, resident taxpayer. Occasional campaigner in the pits for you guys. Okay. I was back up the place that dispenses this pepper spray, and I kind of dropped a taser idea, but for now, anyway. But I have some pictures of something I acquired. If you could catch it on film, it'd be just great. I'm going to leave these behind for you. I spent Saturday with my, at my brother's house. He's a schoolteacher. This would be unlawful for him to have in school right now. And what I'm pesting you guys about is I want you to possibly endorse a letter that teachers could be trained at the use of something like this, certain teachers that are willing and able. It's non-lethal. You could save lives with it. The gun business is going to be going on for years. It'll be years before they probably pass the law, and the question is, will it be effective? We have the 1968 Gun Control Act, and obviously, there's some things on it not working. 60% I have before mentioned are not criminals until they act, so you can't run around treating everybody like, you could limit what type of firearms and stuff they could buy, but if they're available and they don't have a criminal record or a severe mental, record of mental disturbances, then you'd have to treat everybody like they're mentally disturbed or something to deny them. 60% once again haven't committed any crime and have no criminal record whatsoever to deny them a gun. And the question remains if, say you took such things as the AK-47 and AR-15 off the market, or limited their capacity or something like that, you could re-mill the receivers to accept only a five-round magazine, something like that, but still allow people to have them. Or you could just make it that they have to register an extended magazine and pass an enhanced background check, or maybe they'll just move down a shotgun or something. That's like pump-action shotgun, seven rounds, and it's pretty easy to slip around in while you're busy, you know, with your disgusting endeavor of what you're doing. So I just want you to possibly consider a letter to this, and I want to put this to rest tonight, hopefully. And it's not all, and there's also a question in my mind, how many people with a criminal background actually acquire one of these weapons and use it, or are they normal people that just kind of flip out and maybe develop schizophrenia, 18 to 22? It usually kicks in, so it might be normal for years and nothing's noticed in high school. Or it could be like that kid in Florida where the school resource officer tried to have him committed two years before, and he wound up suspended, and he's back with the vengeance. And, I mean, it's totally disgusting when I see the news and I see something like that's going on. It disgusts me as much as anybody. No normal person wouldn't be disgusted by that, but let's find something that works. And hopefully, I can talk you guys into a letter to your federal congressman, your Washington people, and I'm going to try vaccinize in to these people. And I'll handle the rest next week. I had another thing or two, but I'm out of time. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Please take a look at those after, though.
Okay.
All right. How was it? Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry, do you have any motions or comments?
Just a few brief comments. I'm sure that this is going to be included in our insurance policy, but, Ms. Reed, if we can just find out for sure that the contents of the Soretti Building is covered under city insurance, you know, I can't remember seeing that report, it was so long ago, and I just, just since it was brought up, it would give us all peace of mind, just to make sure that our ducks are in a row when it comes to that. The only other thing I have today is on our agenda for 5C and 5D, there's going to be a motion, I'll be for it, it's going to be to table some legislation with traffic patterns for the new Sheets Building. That's going to be potentially put in by Linden in 7th. We had some talk about it in caucus, and I'm sure some of my other councilmen will bring it up. It's, the only legislation we're going to get for this project is going to be for the traffic signals. And it's an immense project that has a lot of minutia to it, and we're just going to, well, I'm going to be for this table, this legislation, just to give us time to hear from PennDOT, city planner, city engineer, and Sheets if they would like to input as well. Once we get our, you know, full in-depth coverage on that, then we can put that back on the table and go ahead with that in full force, with having the knowledge of what the actual project entails. With that, I'll save all my other comments for agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Donahue, do you have any motions or comments?
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
Just a few. I was going to talk about reassessment, but Mr. Elman was so nice to me tonight, I'll pass on that, and I'll pick it up next time. Mrs. Schumacher has been requesting for a while to know what the bond rating is. It's BB+, which is one grade below investment grade. So if, Joan, if you could pass that on to her, I'd appreciate it. Also, I'd like to talk briefly about an update on the idea sessions we had held in city council chambers. Work is in progress on several of the ideas and comments that were shared that evening. For example, the idea of bringing back a guide to doing business in Scranton. We have received the commitment from the Small Business Development Center to work with us with that product, and we are pursuing that. We've also identified a potential funding source, if required, for a new printing of a new guide. An attendee also suggested that signs be erected with a large P indicating the location of parking garages in the city on streets leading up to the garages. This is something that's done in many other cities, so I had a conversation with NDC and ABM, and they are looking into it, and I let them know that city council would support any legislation that was necessary to make that happen. Also, a simplified approach to permits for some of our large events, like the Holiday Market and Arch on the Square, was suggested. This is again a process with discussions with the city solicitor that's in process, and we hope to have something about relative to that hopefully soon. There was also a common theme during this idea session and other conversations with small business owners and property owners and taxpayers, that how do we make reporting issues in the city of Scranton an easier, more friendly, and responsive process? So to address that, city council will be engaging in having a PowerPoint presentation over the next month or two with a company called See Click Fix. Essentially, it works like this. The consumer, who is the citizen or the taxpayer or the business owner, has an app on their phone. They see an issue like a pothole, or graffiti, or even a couch on someone's front porch. They can snap a picture, send it via the app to a city employee who is at, that becomes the point person, who routes the request to the appropriate department or employee. The citizen has knowledge when the report is received and is kept in the loop via text or email as requests work his way to his proper conclusion. Analytics are also maintained on each and every report, so the administration and city council can see that reports are being acknowledged and when they are being resolved, and how long it has taken to close out that particular issue. So this is something I view as not only transparent, but engaged and efficient government, and it's an idea, I think, that, and a concept that we should all embrace for our city. The presentation, we expect to happen in a public caucus, and most likely in a governor's room, because it's easier to set up a large screen, that we can see the full presentation and more people have an opportunity to view it as well. So when that happens, and we have a date, I'll let everybody know through announcement at one of our future council meetings. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahn, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do, thank you. We received a complaint, or I received a complaint a few weeks ago about truck traffic on North Main Avenue, turning onto Orem Street, and then there's all sorts of issues that are going on. So I'm going to ask that we, we did get a memo from the city engineer, but I'm going to ask that we refer this matter to PennDOT and ask them to increase the signage along Main Avenue, because trucks are making the wrong turn and they are damaging people's yards. City engineer John Poschus will be in our caucus next week, April 9th, to give us an update on several projects that will be occurring throughout the city. Received a letter from a gentleman in the 300 block of Ferdinand Street about a property that is in disrepair, so we're going to forward that to the Licensing and Inspections Department. I brought this up in caucus. I have, our office has sent several letters now to the Civil Service Commission, the chairman, Mr. Jeff Mackey, and we sent one to their solicitor, asking for an update on the rules and regulations of the Civil Service Commission. The last copy that our office had received was May 25th, 1999, and we have not received any response yet. And I had some other questions for the Civil Service Commission. So if we could send another letter out to this commission, and I am going to put, I guess I have to put in a right-to-know request, because it's very difficult to get-- guess I have to put in a write-to-know request because it's very difficult to get information. Secondly, the Scranton Sewer Authority, I asked back in February and January if the Scranton Sewer Authority had performed their audit yet. Back in June of 2017, the accounting firm Rainey &amp; Rainey was hired for audit prep services, so I wanted to know if the audit had been completed yet. And if so, I requested a copy. Again, no surprise there, no response. So I'll be doing a write-to-know. We'll send another correspondence on that. Also, I've mentioned this, I think, the last four years, and I don't know if anybody's listening, but the street sweeper that goes throughout the city. I would like, again, to request the administration to take into account a better way of communicating with the residents that the street sweeper is coming to their neighborhood. The problem is that the street sweeper does a great job, but people do not know to move their cars off of the street, so therefore the street is not properly cleaned. So again, I will ask that we send correspondence to the mayor and to the DPW director, asking them to come up with a way. And I've given them several recommendations of my own to let people know when the street sweeper is coming through their neighborhood. I've also received a few complaints about the deterioration of East Mountain Road, so we'll send correspondence to the DPW on that. And then there are also several catch basins, particularly in the area of Yazoo Lane as it meets East Mountain Road, that are totally covered, and residents are concerned about that. And that's all I have for this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple items, following up on some citizens' questions regarding reassessment was brought up again, and I think I addressed it two weeks ago, but city council is committed to seeing this through. Can't speak for the mayor. You'd have to ask him as far as where the administration stands on the issue. But this is not going on the back burner. One way or the other, you know, we're going to have some resolution to this, you know, within this year. Secondly, a resident brought up non-lethal weapons in schools, something I would completely support. I think it would make sense to present that to the school board where they would, may have a little more, you know, a little more say in those type of issues than we would. But I, my wife's a teacher, and you know, that is something that I think would make sense to make our teachers and children more safe. Next, DPW, I want to thank Larry Nguyen and Tim Gilroy, who was on the dispatch, for helping with a couple of issues with the DPW over the week. And finally, I know Councilman Perry mentioned it, you know, last week when it was announced that Sheets was coming to the area, I think a lot of people were, myself included, were initially pretty happy. Then when I found out the location and started hearing from residents, particularly in Westside and those who have children at Scranton High, the location, I have some concerns. Anyone that lives in West Scranton or regularly travels to West Scranton knows how backed up that intersection gets currently. Adding a gas station there with a drive-through and adding some signalization, my fear is that it's not only going to affect that intersection, but it's going to push it back past U-Haul down to the Car Wash and the other way towards the Glider Diner as well. So as was mentioned, city council will introduce the legislation and then table it. We hope to have a representative from PennDOT in, who I know, I know a study was already conducted regarding this intersection. So we'd like to hear more in plain language what their study produced. I know it was very lengthy, so we'd like to talk to them about how they achieved the results of their study. And also, I'd like to hear from a representative from Sheets. It's their project. Like to hear how they would, you know, deal with different issues as they arise. Like I said, I don't have a problem. I'm for them coming to Scranton. I'm just a little bit concerned about that location because it is an already very busy location right by the school and adding, you know, multiplying the traffic by however many times with such a busy gas station, I think is going to make the traffic situation for those going into Westside or going to Scranton High School even worse. So more to come on that in the coming weeks, and that is all.
5B for introduction and ordinance establishing a no parking zone along the west side of Wyoming Avenue from a .175 feet south of the intersection with East Gibson Street to a .325 feet south of the intersection with East Gibson Street to allow for driveway sight distance purposes as shown on the attached highway occupancy permit for the Pennsylvania Northeast Regional Railroad Authority.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction of resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Public Works of the city of Scranton to sign and submit the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation application for traffic signal approval for traffic signal permit number 40115 to upgrade traffic signal at Seventh Avenue and West Linden Street.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction of resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Public Works of the city of Scranton to sign and submit the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation application for traffic signal approval for traffic signal permit number 40308 to upgrade traffic signal at West Linden Street and North Eighth Avenue, Mount Pleasant Drive.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I would like to make a motion to table items 5C and 5D.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in the second to table items 5C and 5D. On the question?
On the question, my major concern with this, and again, we'll have some time to talk to PennDOT about it and anybody else that wants to come in and talk about it, is the, were the designs, did they give the utmost consideration to pedestrian safety? Traffic studies generally put a heavy emphasis on moving cars safely, but they rarely look at how safe is it for the pedestrians to have to cross those intersections. So that's my biggest concern, and they're the type of questions I'll be asking when we get a chance to talk to some officials.
On the question, I agree with everything that's been said, and just from my own experience, trying to get near that area when school is in is an absolute nightmare. And I'm assuming that this project may make that even worse than it already is. So again, I share the safety concerns of my colleagues. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor of tableting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Peters Design Group Incorporated for professional architectural and engineering services for the Sorente Memorial Army Reserve Center renovation project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. We discussed this in the caucus. This project, in its entirety, I've been against from the very beginning. I don't believe that we should, I didn't believe that we should have moved forward with this project. I don't believe that we should add maintenance costs to our budget, which is what is going to happen, in my opinion, especially a community that is in Act 47 and that may very well be leaving Act 47. We may have problems just sustaining on our own, never mind adding additional stress in lighting costs and heating and cooling and maintaining that building. So there are concerns there. My other concern after looking at the contract with Peters Design Group is it seems to me that it is very vague and open-ended. The fee schedule that was included in the backup says that it's going to be negotiable based upon ECC of the project, and they'll negotiate this fee based on extent of services required. And then they give different percentages for some of the work that they plan on doing. I pulled the other bids that came in, and some of them have lump sums, some of them have percentages, but I just, we need more, or I need more clarification on this, I think, before we can move forward. So I did ask that the city solicitor or the business administrator, whoever comes in and explains this. The other concern that I have is in the backup, there were several questions that were posed by the bidders to the city. One of them was that they wanted to see the overall, what the city's budget was for the project, and the city said that no budget will be disclosed at this time, and then there were other additional questions there. So again, I think what I wouldn't want to see is this firm get the contract and then something happened and we end up paying much more than we should have. I'd rather see a flat fee and not leave this so open-ended and so vague. So I'll vote for this tonight. I'm not going to vote for this because I don't agree with the project on its face, but I do think we need answers to these questions that I posed tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question?
Yes, on the question. Councilman Goh and I, you know, we fall on different sides on the issue when it comes to Sorente Building. I was always for this acquisition, but as far as the questions he raised about 5E, you know, I agree with most of those. I think it'd be a good idea to get explanations on some of the questions that he brought up. You know, this was brought up in caucus, and I think this would just help going forward to make sure that, I know, we were told that monies spent on Sorente Building would come straight from grants. And there has been, I know the department, police department's been working hard to allocate these grants. I just want to make sure that it doesn't really say in the language on 5E that we are holding to that. So, you know, I agree that this could use some more explanation.
And just to reiterate, this was discussed in caucus, and we are going to have, invite the city solicitor to our caucus next week to discuss this legislation. And I know we've discussed this at length, but this piece of, this building is going to help increase public safety in the city of Scranton and especially in the Hill section. So it's definitely something that, it's a very deserving project, but the questions regarding this specific legislation, we will have answered prior to a final vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of council number 10, 2018, and ordinance creating and establishing special city account numbers noted entitled Arley, North Main Avenue and Parker for the receipt of grant funds from the Automated Red Light Transportation Enhancement Grant Program in order to provide funding for traffic signal at the intersection of North Main Avenue and Parker Street.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A past reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 28, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to enter into a loan to grant agreement and make a loan grant from the city of Scranton's Business and Industry Loan to Grant Program. Project number is noted in an amount not to exceed $30,000 to Jed Pool Tools Incorporated to assist an eligible project.
What is the recommendation for the chair for the Committee on Community Development?
As chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 29, 2018, accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board and approving the Certificate of Appropriateness for Global Energy Services, 20 West Aylesbury Road, Timonium, Maryland 21093, for replacement of all single-pane windows with new double-pane energy-efficient composite wood hung windows consistent with existing windows. No brickwork necessary situated at the Scranton School District Administration Building, 425 North Washington Avenue, Scranton, PA 18503.
What is the recommendation for the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn? Meeting adjourned.